We have a lot, a lot to do. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Canelas?
Present.
Counselor Palumbia?
Present.
Present.
Counselor Pogun?
He will not be with us this evening.
Counselor Baze?
Present.
Counselor Ginata?
Present.
Counselor Feltham?
Present.
Counselor Felther?
Present.
President Sedaris?
Present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everybody tonight for our big night of budget. Thank you. Public forum, the first public forum is a sign-up public forum. Nobody has signed up, but if anybody wishes to speak, I will recognize you to do that. Seeing none, I close the public forum and move on to the next item, which is the examination of minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of April 9?
Mr. President, I make a motion. We adopt the minutes of April 9 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to move up item seven and item six?
So move, move up item seven first and then item six behind it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Seven A is a proclamation recognizing and honoring Bee Bonnie Baranowski for her service to our community, and I'm going to ask Susan Falcoff to go to the podium and please read the proclamation.
Whereas Bee Bonnie Baranowski, Ph.D., known to all as Bonnie, has distinguished herself for a number of decades in various capacities as a citizen of the city known as the town of Watertown, and whereas Bonnie, a lifelong learner, graduated from Wells College, earned a Ph.D. in psychology, statistics, and measurement from Syracuse University, and completed numerous certificate programs in management, leadership, and information technology. And whereas Bonnie was a pioneer in her career in teaching, administration, and information technology in higher education, and whereas Bonnie participated in many volunteer opportunities in her adopted community, and whereas Bonnie, as an active member of the League of Women Voters, served on the Board of Directors and formulated questions for candidate forums, and whereas Bonnie was initially hired as an election clerk in 2003 and worked at several polling locations, and whereas Bonnie brought her experiences as a poll worker to the Board of Education, Board of Election Commissioners, for which she has faithfully and with great distinction served from 2008 to 2019. And whereas during her tenure, Bonnie redesigned and revised forms used at the polls and strengthened the relationships between the commission and poll workers by providing training and debriefing sessions. And whereas Bonnie worked on the redistricting of the town following the 2010 census. And whereas Bonnie exercised her insight in voting matters to the 2010 Charter Commission. And whereas Bonnie contributed to the implementation of the Election Reform Act of 2014, especially early voting procedures and post-election audits, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the town council of the city known as the town of Watertown recognizes and thanks Bee Bonnie Baranowski for her service to the community. The town council especially extends its appreciation for her chairing the Board of Election Commissioners for five of her 11 years on the board. In witness whereup, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Watertown to be affixed on this 23rd day of April 2019. Mark Sedaris.
Thank you. Counselor Falcoff. Bonnie, thank you.
Thank you. It was my pleasure to lend my, my talents and my education and background to the citizens here in the town of Watertown. I would, I would treasure this. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number six A is a proclamation celebrating Arbor Day 2019. I'm going to recognize Counselor Picchirelli to read this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by water and wind, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business area, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, be it resolved that the town, town council of the city known as the town of Watertown is proud to proclaim April 26, 2019 as Arbor Day and urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next is a proclamation celebrating May 2019 as Older Americans Month. I'm going to ask Counselor Palumba to read this one.
Thank you. Whereas the city known as the town of Watertown includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences. And whereas the city known as the town of Watertown is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. And whereas the city known as the town of Watertown recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. And whereas the city known as the town of Watertown can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council of the city known as the town of Watertown proclaim May 2019 as Older Americans Month and urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community. Herein with witness therefore I attest my hand and cause the great seal of the town of Watertown on the 23rd day of April 2019. Mark Sedaris, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Palumba. Can I get a motion on this proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I want to thank Anne Marie Yagnon for bringing this to our attention and appreciate all you do, and, and this is affirming that we appreciate our older Americans. The next item on the agenda is another proclamation extending condolences to the family of Eva C. Mason. We were reached out by the family because this was a, another over 100, it was a 101-year-old woman. I'm not going to read the proclamation, but I felt it was worthy of a proclamation that was read at her funeral service this past Saturday. So can I get a motion to accept this proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Let's go back to the agenda. And we're back to President's report, and I'm going to do B first. And it's authorized me, my, the Council President, to execute a letter of support for the grant application to the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, MVP, program. I want to recognize Mr. Magoon to go over this for us.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Very simply and straightforward, this is a grant application with the state. Several groups have indicated an interest in us pursuing this program, the Conservation Commission, as well as W3C, the Watertown Energy Efficiency and Environment Committee, as well as the Subcommittee of the Council, GPW Subcommittee. This is a program that will allow us to apply for a grant and get planning funds to support efforts at energy, energy and sustainability and climate change and address a whole host of issues. So this letter is, is part of the application process, and I'd encourage the council to support us, including that in the package.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we authorize you to execute this letter of support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Five A is a report on the evaluation of the town auditor and the referral to the committee for salary adjustment for FY 2018 and FY 2019. The evaluation of the town auditor, Tom Tracy, has been completed, and I'm presenting the composite of that to the council and the community. The evaluation consisted of seven categories, and I will go over them. Before I do that, I will state that one councilor was not able to evaluate the auditor because they felt that there was very little direct communication between the auditor and the town council. There was also a request to refer to committee how to find a more effective way to evaluate the position. I did not include this in the final scores as I felt it would not be appropriate in compiling average scores. The first category was leadership. The overall rating for Mr. Tracy was on the high end of very good superior. The second category was quality of work and service to the town. The overall rating was the highest of all ranking, ranking high in the very good superior score. The third category was productivity. The overall rating was in the good above-average score. The fourth category was initiative and creativity. The overall rating was on the good average, good above-average score. The fifth category was adaptability. The overall rating was in the very good superior score. The sixth category was communication. The overall rating was in the very good superior score. The last category was cooperation. The overall rating was in the very good superior score. Based on all of the above, the average scores across all categories was 3.47, which is in the very good superior range. I'm now going to go over some of the comments that were included on folk, the councilors' evaluations. I just pick and chose some just to bring a, give an idea. First comment, Mr. Tracy is courteous, knowledgeable, and willing to assist when asked for information. Second comment, I didn't see a noticeable change from prior years, but I don't have sufficient information to assess all skill categories. I believe that Auditor Tracy has strong personal ethics, integrity, and work commitment as the financial watchdog for the town. Another comment, Mr. Tracy has been an invaluable resource for me during my first year on the town council. His deep knowledge about the town's finances and history make him an extremely effective town auditor. Next comment, as far as I can tell, the auditor's work is thorough, accurate, and meets or exceeds the expectations of a town auditor. But how would I know? There was a goal set last year to create better mechanisms to share his work with the council, but I have seen no effort from the auditor to meet that goal. Another comment, the town auditor's contributions are invaluable to the town council accomplishing its goals and objectives for the people of Watertown. Over the, another comment is over the past 18 months, Tom has been working very hard to get the annual audits back on track to be complete by December 31st. Another comment, Tom continues to take on additional responsibilities without a complaint and keeps the goal of doing what's best for the town in all of his work. Included in that were some goals for the coming year that are also part of the evaluation process, and some of the goals were better navigate the fine line of working for the town council while responding to the town manager. Another goal was work with the statewide Community Preservation Coalition to provide training for the members of the Community Preservation Committee. Another goal was find more, find ways to communicate more with the town council about what you are doing so that the council can have basis for evaluation. Another goal was more timely report submissions. The 11th hour prior to a meeting is unacceptable. Next, increase collaboration with the town council to understand short and long-term implications of policy decisions. And last, get the annual audits completed by December 31st. Therefore, in my opinion, and given this evaluation by my colleagues, the town auditor has done and continues to do a very, very good job for the citizens of this community. I want to take this opportunity to thank and appreciate Tom Tracy for all of his efforts for the town of Watertown. Thank you, Tom. There is a salary adjustment because we're a little bit behind for FY 18 and 19. So I'm asking for a referral to the committee on personnel and town organizations, and I will bring some proposals to them.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I would also like the committee, a referral to that committee by one of the council who was requesting the committee find, try to find a more effective way to evaluate the position.
So moved.
Is there, there's a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Sorry about the long-windedness. Next item is seven B, which is the Committee on Human Services and Rules and Ordinance Report Regarding Noise Regulation Revisions. This report was read at our last council meeting. There were some changes that needed to be made that were pointed out by Counselor Picchirelli. Those changes have been made, so I'd like to get a motion to accept this report as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for fixing the report. Next item is motions, orders, and resolutions, and it's a first reading on a proposed loan order authorizing the town treasurer, with the approval of the town manager, to borrow and/or expend monies in the amount of $12,441,016 under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section, Subsection 7.7 or pursuant to any other enabling authority for the purpose of paying costs of designer services related to the design, construction, addition to, and/or renovation of the three elementary schools. And I'm not going to read the rest of it because it's standard language. We, I think it's, before I recognize the town manager, to give a brief overview of what this is, I just want to explain to the council and the community, this is, this is somewhat of a culmination of what the School Building Committee has been working towards, which is the proposal to renovate and expand our three elementary schools. This is the first phase. This is a very, very important piece of what we're doing here for the schools and for the education of our children, and we'll be having a public hearing subsequent two weeks from tonight to discuss this and vote on it, hopefully in a very positive vote. I'm going to recognize the manager to go over this because...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Certainly, just echoing the Council President Sedaris's comments, it's a very, very exciting time. Tonight, it's just the first reading. The proposed loan order will be advertised for a public hearing. The public hearing in action on the $12 million proposed loan order would occur three weeks from tonight on May 14th. Just, but by way of background for the folks here and at home, this goes back to, as the Council President alluded to, back in 2017 when the town of Watertown through the public schools had put out a request for services for an order of project manager services, OPM, as well as a request for designer services. Town council, and I walked through that on May 14th meeting, had appropriated monies to move forward to designer services, as well as hiring of other project, owner's project manager. Given all that, back in 2000, in late 2017, it was necessary to establish a school building committee. That occurred in March of 2018. Subsequent to that, back in the Plenary Budget Overview on October 9th of 2018, I indicated the school committee had been, school building committee had been working tirelessly to review conceptual designs. Subsequent to that, on January 23rd, the School Building Committee did, in fact, adopt a conceptual and schematic design, including all new construction at the Hosmer and Akonos schools and a comprehensive renovation in addition to the Lowell School. Subsequent to that vote on January 23rd, we had included the $170 million in the capital improvement program for '20 to '24. Subsequent to that, the town council in March adopted a conceptual recommendation concurrent with the decision to proceed with the building for the future initiative of $170 million for the three elementary school project funding within the confines of two and a half. Therefore, as, as the President indicated, Mr. President, members of the council, three weeks from tonight on May 14th, there will be a public hearing in consideration. The administration will make a presentation or provide an opening. Mr. Scott Dunlap from AI3 will be the main presenter in his honor, proposed loan order for $12,441,016. Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item is new business. Any new business to come before the council? Seeing none, we go to the highlight of the evening. Communications from the town manager, and it's the submission, submission of the fiscal year 2020 budget, and I'm going to dismiss Attorney Rich. Thank you for your help this evening. By the way, the school budget book was dropped off this evening. It's on the table for each councilor, which is part of the annual budget, but that's the school committees.
Thanks, Tom.
You have a lot of information. Mr. Manager, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the town council, the audience here and the audience at home. Tonight, it's my pleasure to, pursuant to the provisions of the Watertown Home Rule Charter, present the submitted budget for fiscal year 2020 for the period of time July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. As you know, back in October, we had the Plenary Budget Overview in accordance with the town council resolution on the fiscal year 2020 budget, along with the charter of the community. At that meeting in October, we indicated that we had a challenge of a little over $800,000. That evening, I indicated that the revenues will either go up, the expenditures go down, a combination thereof to have a balanced budget that would submit to town council in April. The chart on page 20 of the budget message will show you that the revenues went up, close to $1.5 million, and expenditures down, went up another $662,000. Thus tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, we have a balanced budget to submit to town council. Just speaking on the first reading tonight on the $12 million borrowing. During the overview presentation in October, I had stated that School Building Committee had worked tirelessly to review conceptual design options for the three elementary schools in effort...
schools in effort to ultimately select a preferred design option that is best interest of the town, the taxpayers, and the successful education of our children. Subsequent to that, the -- as we indicated tonight, we have the borrowing. Very, very pleased tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, and the audience here, that two initiatives, having a fully funded retirement system as of July one, and a long-range funding plan for addressing the other unfunded other post-employment benefits or OPED liability, and the financing of the three elementary school project within the confines of Proposition Two and a Half are incorporated in tonight's budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty. Subsequent to the preliminary budget overview in October, the town council, the budget and fiscal oversight met several times. We provided fiscal year two thousand twenty budget policy guidelines. Included within the budget message tonight are the top two priorities of the rank cost-saving revenue guidelines and the top seven priorities of ranked program enhancement expenditures. I won't end up reading those this evening, but they're all within there. You will note throughout the budget message that all of these priorities are either incorporated within the submitted fiscal year two thousand twenty budget, along with other priorities that will be addressed during the fiscal year. With respect to the bond market, I just want to remind you, back in two thousand, November of two thousand thirteen, St. and Pors upgraded the town's long-term bond rating from double A to triple A. In one of the six factors, the sixth factor that they cited, and this is important, with the upgrade, it was very strong debt and contingent liability position driven mostly by the town's low net direct debt and plans to address its unfunded pension and other post-employment benefits or OPED liabilities. In April of seventeen, the Moody's did the same thing and provided the town with an upgrade. In fiscal years two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, the town will continually utilize bond monies to finance infrastructure improvements, and it's imperative to continue the town's commitment to sound financial management and fiscal stability. I want to briefly speak on the Community Preservation Act. As many folks know, the voters of the community adopted the Community Preservation Act with a two percent surcharge back in November of eight -- eight of two thousand sixteen. In June of two thousand eighteen, the town council adopted an ordinance establishing a Community Preservation Committee. A follow-up to that in December, there was a request for confirmation of four citizens who were later subsequently confirmed in January two thousand nineteen. The first meeting of the committee was held in February, and there's been four meetings to date. The Community Preservation Committee will begin a process which includes a development of a budget in order to determine the recommendations that will be made to the Honorable Town Council regarding the utilization of fiscal years eighteen, nineteen, and two thousand twenty CPA funds. The budget and the accounting for the Community Preservation Act will be done with a special revolving fund and is not included in the fiscal year two thousand twenty submitted budget. Want to briefly speak on the iCube program. Back in July of two thousand seventeen, Watertown and Athena Health had submitted a joint application to the Commonwealth for approval of iCube projects. If approved, the iCube project -- program is expected to provide up to twenty-five million dollars of state funds to improve publicly-owned infrastructure old by Athena's Arsenal Campus, and it will be paid for by the state tax revenues generated from curation of jobs at Athena and Watertown. Presently, the town and Athena are in discussions regarding a potential amendment to the joint application that would allow for the construction of six of the ten projects during fiscal year two thousand twenty. Any amendment to the joint application would be subject to the review and approval by the Honorable Town Council. Should the parties agree on an amendment, it's expected that an amended joint application will be submitted to the Commonwealth on or before June thirtieth of nineteen. Briefly want to speak on snow and ice removal. Back on March twelfth, the town council had authorized excess expenditure of snow and ice removal. One of the things that we wanted to do is, on April nine, town council provided a transfer of two hundred and nine thousand three seventy-eight, so we would not have to deal with it with tonight's budget submission. You'll see in the budget message, we've listed nine years of snow and ice removal expenditure, the -- going back to fiscal year two thousand eleven. The year that I like the best is fiscal year two thousand twelve, which was less than four hundred thousand dollar spending. The one I don't really care for is fiscal year two thousand fifteen, which is two point two million dollars of spending. On the local aid front, we have tonight's budget is an increase in the fiscal year two thousand twenty over fiscal year nineteen is seven hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars. We've provided you, which we've done for many years now, thirteen tables that show how the various budgets, beginning with fiscal year ten through fiscal year twenty, was done, the dollar amounts. Additionally, I would like to shout out to the town council, in light of the complexity of the issues involved and coming finalized in a proposed budget, the Honorable Town Council, in an effort to afford more time, had provided, in accordance with the Watertown Home Rule Charter, voted on March twenty-sixth to extend the deadline by two weeks, thus allowing -- I very much appreciate town council's action on that. Now we get into what I consider the highlights of the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget, which are on page twenty-two. First highlight I want to talk about is that this community will have a fully funded retirement system as of July one, two thousand nineteen. As a result of aggressive funding of the retirement system whereby the pension appropriation increased by eleven million one hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine ninety-two from fiscal year two thousand nine through fiscal year nineteen, which is a hundred and fifty-two point three four percent increase or a fifteen point two-three percent annual average increase over the ten fiscal years. The town's unfunded pension liability, again, will be fully funded as of July one, the first day of fiscal year twenty. The second major highlight of tonight's budget, as a result of the aggressive funding of the retirement system, the other unfunded other post-employment benefits liability of one hundred and twenty-two point six million dollars will be addressed with the appropriation of over eight million dollars in fiscal year twenty and the implementation of a funding schedule through fiscal year two thousand twenty-nine, when the OPED liability is projected to be fully funded. What I would like to suggest and take a moment to provide context to that, the communities around us, Watertown's unfunded pension liability will be paid for on July one, two thousand nineteen, or fiscal year twenty. Our surrounding communities, the city of Cambridge, will have their unfunded pension liability paid off in fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Belmont, two thousand twenty-nine. Newton, Natick, Needham, fiscal year two thousand thirty. Waltham, the city of Waltham, fiscal year two thousand thirty-two. Arlington, fiscal year two thousand thirty-five. Tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, we're talking about funding the retirement system and paying off the other post-employment benefits of one hundred and twenty-two point six million dollars by fiscal year two thousand twenty-nine. That's an accomplishment that the town council should be very, very proud of, not only addressing the unfunded pension liability and setting up a funding schedule for the OPED liability. The third bullet for tonight's budget, the highlights, as a result of aggressive funding of the retirement system, you hear the theme, you've got the theme, all three bullets of that, financing of the one hundred and seventy million dollars for the three elementary school project will begin in fiscal year twenty, tonight, and is projected to be done in phases beginning in fiscal year twenty through fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. In the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget, thirty-five million dollars is projected to be borrowed, beginning with tonight's first reading of a proposed loan order totaling twelve point four billion dollars. The fiscal year two thousand twenty budget includes nine hundred and eighty-one thousand for debt service related to the building projects. Some of the other additional highlights of tonight's budget being submitted to town council, new positions and new program initiatives are as follows. We have the continued five percent increase of the Watertown school system. That totals two point four billion dollars. An increase of over a million dollars in the public safety budgets. Aggressive funding of street and sidewalk improvements. Aggressive funding of park renovations and improvements. Additional resources for the Department of Public Buildings. Increased funding of over a hundred thousand dollars for the Public Works Forestry Budget, which was a highly ranked fiscal year two thousand twenty budget policy guideline. An increase of a hundred thousand dollars in the snow and ice removal budget. An additional police officer. The creation of assistant fire chief position. Enhanced ambulance service, which I'll speak to more when we get to the fire department. Additional resources for fire prevention. Enhancement of the fire department's health, wellness, and safety programs. The library local historic collection preservation project year two. And additional resources for Hatch. There are fifteen other continued program initiatives that I won't read. On page twenty-three of the eighty-two-page budget message, the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget includes revenue and expenditures each totaling one hundred and forty-seven million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which represents a five point five million dollar increase over the fiscal year two thousand nineteen revised budget, and it's a three point eight nine percent increase. The submitted fiscal year two thousand twenty budget fully utilizes the local property tax and includes estimated new growth of three point five million dollars. The real estate and personal property taxes of one hundred and fourteen million six eighty-nine eight fifty-nine represent seventy-seven point six two percent of the fiscal year two thousand twenty revenues. Additionally, there's a paragraph in there from the chairman of the board, Mr. Smith, related to Watertown's real estate market, and also, Mr. Smith has provided us with a community comparison that shows Watertown's average tax rate compared to six surrounding communities. With respect to local receipts and other financing sources, the ambulance fees will go up three hundred thousand dollars. That's related to the enhancement of the ambulance service and the fire department, which I'll speak to briefly. The motor vehicle excise is going up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Investment income by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and Medicaid reimbursement going down by a hundred thousand dollars. With respect to other financing sources, there's a drop of about almost close to two million dollars. That's related to the one-time utilization of one point seven million dollars for the three elementary school project with the sale of the former East Branch Library, as well as a half a million dollars for utilization of overlay surplus. With respect to the significant changes in expenditure, the pension is dropping by ten point one million dollars. Other funded pension liability is going up four point seven five, and other post-employment benefits, which we'll speak to. Capital Improvement Program, which is on pages twenty-seven to forty-five, as I indicated in the first reading tonight, we submitted that to town council, the twenty to twenty-four capital improvement program on January thirty-one, two thousand nineteen. The Committee on Budget and Fiscal Oversight presented twenty-nine conceptual recommendations to town council for their consideration and voted on March twelfth. Those are all listed within the fiscal year twenty budget message. On page thirty-one of the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget message, the fiscal year twenty to twenty-four general fund, CIP, totals five hundred and three million dollars. Specifically, a lot of that's related to the three elementary schools project of one hundred and seventy million dollars and a high school project of one hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. I'm going to jump right through all the way to page thirty-five of the budget message and talk about school capital projects. The fiscal year twenty to twenty-four capital improvement program includes funding of various school improvements totaling three hundred and fifty-four million two sixty-four five hundred over the five fiscal years. And then in fiscal year twenty, there's over thirty-eight point seven million dollars due in large part to the thirty-five million dollars that we talked about for the three elementary school project. The Building for the Future Initiative, we'll kind of pass over that as we just discussed. I want to call your attention to page forty-three of the budget message, which is related to fiscal year two thousand twenty proposed loan orders. During fiscal year two thousand twenty, proposed loan orders will be brought forward for the various capital items contained in fiscal year two thousand twenty CIP. There are twenty-two items listed there. I won't go through all of them. The dollar amount in fiscal year two thousand twenty is fifty-four million two sixty-five eight hundred. Want to speak on street and sidewalks and kind of throw out a compliment to the town council, again, for the amount of monies that have been raised for street and sidewalk improvements. The fiscal year two thousand twenty general fund budget includes a million sixty-one thousand six hundred dollars. Beginning in fiscal year nineteen ninety-nine and through tonight's budget, the Honorable Town Council would have approved or will approve fifteen million one hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars, which is an average of almost six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars over the last twenty-two fiscal years. Additionally, within the budget message, we have five future loan orders for street and sidewalks totaling twenty-three million nine hundred thousand dollars, beginning in fiscal year twenty through twenty-four. In summary, as indicated in the budget message, beginning in fiscal year two thousand thirteen and continuing through fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, the Honorable Town Council has or is planning on authorizing loan orders for street and sidewalk improvements totaling forty-three million six hundred thousand dollars over the twelve fiscal years, all within the confines of Proposition Two and a Half. Jumping to page forty-six of the budget message is the water and sewer enterprise budgets, which the fiscal year two thousand twenty water and sewer enterprise budgets total nineteen million eight forty-nine oh two, which is an increase of a million two thirty-four from fiscal year two thousand nineteen. The budget includes the funding of the eighteen full-time employees. His funding is continued for the project engineer to assist the Department of Public Works with items and issues related to town council budget policy guidelines two B and two H and ongoing budget project guidelines. The water and sewer enterprise capital improvement program is also included within tonight's budget. That's on page forty-seven. That dollar amount totals twenty-five million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Jumping to page fifty of general government budget, tonight's fiscal year two thousand twenty budget appropriation for the general government is six million one hundred and thirty-three five eighty-eight, which is a projected increase of a little over three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. The fiscal year two thousand nineteen includes funding of forty-eight full-time and seven part-time employees within the fifteen general government departments. Funding has been included tonight for an additional position in the Department of Public Buildings and another full-time position that would be split between the community development planning and the personnel department. Therefore, tonight's budget includes funding of fifty full-time and seven part-time employees within the fifteen general government departments. The town council reserve tonight recommended for fiscal year two thousand twenty is two million sixty-five thousand dollars, which is a decrease of about a million four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars over the current fiscal year nineteen revised appropriation. With respect to elections during fiscal year two thousand twenty, there'll be three exercise -- election exercise money has been put forward for. Be a preliminary election on Tuesday, September seventeen, a municipal election on Tuesday, November five, and the presidential primary on Tuesday, March thirty-third of two thousand twenty. With respect to the community development planning, in accordance with several of the Honorable Town Council's fiscal years eighteen through twenty budget policy guidelines, community development planning and continual implementation of key recommendations of the comprehensive plan, the plan deals with a broad spectrum of issues and encourages the town government and citizens to work in concert toward common goals. Honorable Town Council fiscal year two thousand twenty budget policy guideline two K Honorable Town Council fiscal year 2020 budget policy guideline 2K reads as follows. Enhance the capabilities of the Department of Community Development and Planning by adding resources or redeploying additional resources. Since fiscal year 2017 through the fiscal year 2019 budget, town council has provided funding for the following position. Assistant Building Inspector, a Transportation Planner, a Code Enforcement Officer, and a Senior Environmental Planner. As I mentioned earlier tonight, this funding is included within the fiscal year 2020 budget for a full-time position to be split between Community Development Planning and the Personnel Department. That Principal Account Clerk position will assist the Community Development Planning and the Building Department with administrative processes related to the growing number of permits and allow for administrative coverage at, beginning at 7:30 in the morning when the Police Building Department opens, thereby allowing the inspectors to be more efficient with their time. With respect to open space and recreation plan, the town council adopted an open space and recreation plan back in April of 2015. Subsequent to that, the Town Council's Committee on Human Services had met with the Conservation Commission in executive session to prioritize proposals for possible open space acquisition. The town council will be meeting an executive session to further discuss this endeavor. As a follow-up, a budgetary plan to meet the identified need for acquisition of land for open space or recreational use will be developed subsequent to final policy direction by the Honorable Town Council and input from the Community Preservation Committee in accordance with fiscal year 2020 budget policy guideline 2I. With respect to informational technology, the appropriation is going up $50,576. The appropriation for fiscal year 2020 is a little over $795,000, and it continues the practice of funding or augment services by sharing a current school employee. One of the Town Council's budget policy guidelines for fiscal year 2019 was to move forward with a budget policy guideline to a townwide informational technology assessment. Given that as a follow-up to that, on March 26, Town Council appropriated $61,500 in order to move forward with that. Turning very quickly to Department of Public Buildings, the budget that we submitted a year ago include funding of the Department of Public Buildings and recommended appropriation was $297,000. Subsequent to the adoption of the budget in June of 2018, the Town Council and the Honorable School Committee executed a memorandum agreement agreeing to the creation of a joint municipal and school facilities department in accordance with Mass General Laws Chapter The fiscal year 2020 appropriation tonight is $477,429 and $180,429 above the fiscal year 2019 budget. Monies have been included for an additional position, which would be a general maintenance helper. Within the fiscal year 2020 school budget and various other town budgets, includes funding of the Department, funding related to the Department of Public Buildings. Discussions will continue on how best to proceed in merging these related funds from other departments into the Department of Public Buildings budget. With respect to retirement benefits that are on page 54, we've already gone over the major highlights for this evening. Just a shout-out to Town Council's back quite some time ago, the budget policy guideline, ongoing budget policy guideline reads as follows. It's related to pension liability and other post-employment benefits. In order to achieve long-term financial stability, meet the town's obligation to its employees and retirees, and maintain favorable bond ratings, the council, the retirement board, and the town manager will work to address the unfunded pension liability and other post-employment benefits. As of January 1, 2018, the unfunded pension liability, the retirement system is $24.2 million, which is a decrease of $42.3 million over the unfunded pension liability as of January 1, 2010. The Watertown Contributory Retirement Funding Schedule is approved by PARAC as being funded as of July 1, 2019. The Watertown Contributory Retirement Board is planning a funding schedule review as of January 1, 2019. The results may impact the fiscal year 2020 pension appropriation. Back in October, when we did the preliminary budget overview, I indicated the town was on the verge of having the fully-funded retirement system as of July 1. We were proposing an appropriation of $8,88,176. Subsequent to that overview, this is important, and upon further reflection on the pension trust market return of a negative 4.7% in calendar year 2018, an additional appropriation of $5 million is recommended to the unfunded pension liability account in fiscal year 2020 to address concerns with the calendar year 2018 performance. Therefore, tonight's funding level of the pension appropriation in fiscal year 2020 is $13,88,176, which is a decrease of almost $5 million. In fiscal year 2021, a year from now, we're presenting the budget, the pension will drop by $12.2 million. Other post-employment benefits on page 56. Halfway through there, we talked about having a unfunded actuary liability dropped as of June 30, 2017, $122.6 million. On January 22 is a recommendation, a follow-up to recommendations from the Committee on Budget and Fiscal Oversight, the Honorable Town Council adopted an order establishing the Watertown OPEC Trust Fund, designated the town treasurer to be the trustee of the fund, and approved the use of the Massachusetts Prudent Investment Act to invest OPEC trust funds. Additionally, back in January, the Town Council had asked to establish, develop an investment policy statement, and establish a funding plan to address the unfunded OPEC liability. Tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, we are presenting that funding plan. The projected funding plan on page 58 of the budget message to address the unfunded pension OPEC liability will begin in fiscal year 20 with an $8 million appropriation and go all the way through fiscal year 2029. That this funding plan will result in the OPEC liability being fully funded as of fiscal year 2029. The projected OPEC funding plan may be adjusted to address any issue that may arise from the pension trust in the upcoming June 30, 2019 actuary evaluation of the post-retirement benefits program. Insurance employee benefits, as you know, Town Council, we had voted to one of the 11 Massachusetts communities to begin with, being, participating in the Group Insurance Commission as of July 1, 2009. There was a follow-up in May of 2014 that we have coverage with the Group Insurance Commission through June 30, 2021. This decision allows the town to continue providing quality health insurance to its employees and retirees. You'll see a chart on page 21 of this budget message that indicates that the health insurance over some 11 fiscal years went up an average of 1.84%. This track record will continually greatly assist in the development of future budgets while striving to provide the highest level of essential services to the citizens of Watertown. Public safety is on page 59 of the 82-page budget message. Want to speak first to the Police Department. The fiscal year 2019 budget, the current budget includes funding of 69 uniformed police officers, including 51 patrol officers, nine dispatchers, four civilian employees, and crossing guards for various locations throughout the town. In fiscal years 2009 and 2010, funding was eliminated for eight police patrol office positions, four in fiscal year 2009, and four in fiscal year 2010. In fiscal years 2015, 17, 18, and 19, four of the eight positions were restored. In an effort to restore two of the eight positions, the Police Department submitted a request for additional funding for two positions. As I mentioned earlier, the submitted fiscal year 2020 budget tonight includes funding of one additional patrol, police officer above the fiscal year 2019 level. This additional patrol officer will enable the department to assign a detective full-time to the Southern Middlesex County Drug Task Force, which will be beneficial to the department and our community. Chief Lawne will speak further on the importance of this initiative at his upcoming budget hearing. Therefore, tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, the fiscal year 2020 Police Department budget includes funding of 77 uniformed police officers, including 52 patrol officers, nine dispatchers, the four civilian employees, and the crossing guards. The submitted budget tonight is $9,960,086 and is $725,550 above the fiscal year 2019 budget. Monies for a proposed fiscal year 2017 and 19 collective bargaining agreements with the Police Association and police supervisors have been included. If agreements aren't reached prior to the Town Council's consideration and action on the submitted fiscal year 2020 budget in early June amendment would be brought forward, moving those monies to council reserve. Monies have been included to increase the compensation levels of the crossing guards and in order to address issues of recruitment and retainment. Police Department remains committed to expanding community policing philosophy throughout the department with focus on creating more partnerships with the community, providing training to the Police Department on the six pillars of President Barack Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, and maintaining and enhancing the trust in Watertown police officers by all members and groups of our community. The Police Department will continue to place a school resource officer at the middle and high school for the 2019 and '20 school year, and will continue the Police Mountain Bicycle Program, a community policing initiative restored in fiscal year 2017. Additionally, the Police Department, in conjunction with the Recreation Department, will continue their efforts to restore the Cups and Kids Program and the Police Athletic Program. Like to speak to now with respect to the Fire Department, which begins on page 64 of the 82-page budget message. As you recall, back in fiscal year 17 budget message, in an effort to improve the quality of life for the residents of Watertown, the Fire Department was seeking to upgrade its level of care currently provided from basic life support, a BLS, to advanced life support, ALS. Within the budget message shows kind of a long process to get to that point. As a result of significant efforts of all members of the Fire Department under the leadership of the late Fire Chief Mario Orangio, on February 7, 2017, the Watertown Fire Department began advanced life support ambulance service. The fiscal year 2019 budget includes funding of 87 uniformed firefighters, of which four were from a SAFER grant and two civilian positions operating from three fire stations. The 87 uniform firefighters included the Fire Chief, four deputy chiefs, eight captains, 15 lieutenants, and 59 firefighters. In fiscal year 2009 and 2011, funding was eliminated for nine firefighter positions. The SAFER grant allowed for four to come back in February 2014. The Fire Chief had requested additional funding for the following items. Want to staff a basic life support ambulance and run two ambulances by increasing the minimum staffing from 17 to 19 per shift. We will utilize overtime monies to do this. You saw earlier that we had ambulance funding going up $300,000. We would run two ambulances. If we don't have two ambulances, the minimum would be at 17. If we have two ambulances, it'll be run at 17. The Chief had asked to create an assistant fire chief position or upgrade the staff services officer to an assistant fire chief. I've opted to recommend moving forward with LADA, which would be a staff services officer, upgrading that to an assistant fire chief. Upgrade one firefighter to a lieutenant to provide additional assistance for fire prevention. And then lastly, expanding the current program to increase the health, safety, and wellness of the employees. All of these requests by the Chief Quinn have been funded within the fiscal year 2020 budget. So tonight's submitted budget includes, again, the funding of 87 firefighters in two civilian positions. The makeup would be as follows. Fire Chief Quinn, an assistant fire chief position, four deputies, one less captain, one more lieutenant, and one less firefighter. But again, 87 uniformed firefighter personnel. The fiscal year 2020 appropriation for the Fire Department is $10,911,158, an increase of a little shy of $300,000 over the fiscal year 2019 budget. Respect the Public Works on page 66. The recommended Department of Public Works budget exclusive of waste disposal and snow and ice removal is $5,716,616, which is an increase of a little over $147,000. It includes funding of the same number of full-time and one part-time employee in the general fund divisions, which includes the continued funding of the forestry supervisor, tree warden position that was funded in fiscal year 2019 with monies being reallocated from the Community Development and Planning budget. Department of Public Works fiscal year 2020 budget includes funding to support the Town Council's fiscal year 2020 budget policy guidelines, as well as support for additional townwide priorities. Town Council fiscal year 2020 budget guideline 2D reads as follows. Enhance the capabilities of the Department of Public Works Forestry Department by adding and redeploying resources to improve Watertown public shade trees, increase the town's overall tree canopy by developing a robust data collection process for public shade trees in Watertown and analyzing the data to determine an action plan and to seek collaboration and partnership opportunities with community groups such as Trees for Watertown. I'm pleased to indicate tonight, Mr. President, members of council, we provide an additional funding of $100,000 within the fiscal year 2020 Department of Public Works Forestry budget to work and move forward with that budget goal. As I indicated earlier with respect to snow and ice, the snow and ice appropriation is recommended to go to $500,000, which is an increase of $100,000 over the original appropriation of $1.4 million, and is to decrease to $64,810. One of the things that Chief Superintendent Me and has been doing at the department has been looking at analyzing contractual expenses and services levels associated with the annual streetlight repair and maintenance. The department believes that by discontinuing the vendor contract upon expiration and bringing the streetlight repair and maintenance service function in-house will result in a higher level of service at a reduced cost. Additionally, the department has been working with Solid Waste and Recycling Hall or Republic Service to tackle the significant challenges facing every community with single-stream recycling. As Superintendent Me has indicated in the past, the, his belief is that it would be reducing the violations, the 500 violations issued in fiscal year 2019. And Chief Superintendent Me and his staff believe that that can be greatly reduced through effective communication. The Second Amendment to the Wheeler Brader Service Agreement, the Town Council had voted on quite some time ago, will expire on June 30 of 2020. We'll look to have discussions on the further amendment to the service agreement beginning in fiscal year 2021. So tonight, the waste disposal appropriation is $3,187,237, which is $88,000 above the fiscal year 19 level. But interesting enough, it is still $49,703 below the fiscal year 12 appropriation some eight fiscal years ago. Lastly, within the Public Works, a budgetary plan to meet the identified needs for Public Works staging space will be developed subsequent to final Honorable Town Council policy directive in accordance with the fiscal year 2020 budget policy guideline 2F. Health and Human Services budgets are on page 72 of the 82-page budget. The Health and Human Services budget are made up of health, council on aging, and veteran services. With respect to the Health Department, funding has been continued for both environmental and community health services. and community health services toward fulfillment of the mission of the Health Department to protect and promote health, prevent disease and disability, and access and improve the health status of the community. Back in August of 2018, Larry Ramden was appointed the Director of Public Health. Planned services for fiscal year 2020 include the continuation of a full-time social services resource hours to provide residents of our community and their families with a single access point to a wide variety of social services, as well as an assessment, informational referral, and short-term intervention and follow-up as necessary. Last month, on March 18, Patrick George was appointed to Veteran Services Officer. The Veteran Services Department is beginning a thorough process to update and identify benefits for the veteran community with input from veterans and veterans organizations. The Veteran Services Officer is undergoing a listening session to identify priorities for future veteran memorials within our community. As I indicated when we did the transfer, when Mr. George showed up, that our Veterans' Benefit Account is going to be maintained above with the transfer for moving forward as the fiscal year 20 appropriation is addressing the revised and continue with the revised appropriation to address. That's a result of successful outreach efforts. With respect to the Senior Center in fiscal year 2019, Ms. Gagnon had requested a part-time services assistant, increasing the hours to make caseworker a full-time position and an additional day of bus service for seniors. All those monies were included in the fiscal year 19 budget. So the current budget for the Health and Human Services budgets, which are health, council on aging, and veteran services, include 12 full-time and four part-time employees. Due to the continuous development of the program offerings to meet the diverse needs of senior visitors, monies have been included in the fiscal year 2020 budget to bring the program coordinator position to full-time status. The increased hours will allow for more time to develop programs to address mental health and wellness, grief support, issues and cultural events such as an Armenian morning held on April 10 two weeks ago here. Therefore, tonight's budget for the Health and Human Services increases will be 13 full-time and three part-time employees within three divisions. With respect to Recreation and the John A. Ryan Arena, which is on page 75 of the 82-page message, in fiscal year 2020, the Recreation budget of $361,274 and the John A. Ryan Skating Arena budget of $458,214 are listed separately within the submitted fiscal year 20 budget. In fiscal year 21, both appropriations may be combined as one, a consideration may be given to establishing enterprise funds to account for recreation activities. The John A. Ryan staffing is continued to two full-time employees and seasonal staff. The fiscal year 2020 Recreation budget includes four full-time employees and seasonal staff as well. As you recall, we had provided a Recreation Supervisor as a follow-up to one of the town council's budget policy guidelines to work collaboratively with the Health Department and Senior Center on strengthening programs directing the community wellness. One of the things to Mr. Santola's credit and Ms. Gagnon's and the school system is the Recreation Department is partnering with the Senior Center to offer snow shoveling with assistants of middle school and high school students, to seniors, and those who are not capable. As I mentioned earlier, the Recreation Department, working with Police Department and the Cops and Kids and the Police Athletic League, one of the things that Mr. Santola reminds me often is that the two movie nights have been very popular, an example of the collaboration between the two departments. And additionally, discussions are continuing with the schools and the town, looking to address the current state of athletic field use by the schools in accordance with a related school committee motion. With respect to the library, which is on page 77 of the fiscal year 2020 budget message, the uses of the library continues to rise since the expansion and renovation and circulation. Circulation in fiscal year 18 of physical materials and electronic downloads was over 659,000, and library visits continue averaging over 36,000. In fiscal year 2019, the Library Director and the Library Board of Trustees had requested additional funding for local historic preservation project and historic map restoration. Both of those requests were funded in the fiscal year 19 budget. Tonight, the Library Director and the Library Board of Trustees have requested additional funding with the following items. Library programming, a part-time hatch assistant, and local history collection preservation project year two. Very pleased tonight to indicate that all of those requests are funded within the fiscal year 2020 library budget. Tonight's funding level for fiscal year 2020 is $3,111,83. It's in compliance with the municipal appropriation requirement set by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Again, very, very pleased, we mentioned this many times, but the library continues to be open, more hours than any library building in the Commonwealth, including Friday nights at 7:00. Expanded Saturday hours in the summer and Sunday hours year-round. One of the things we talk about are library improvements. In the fiscal year 2018 capital improvement program was $120,000 for the Sliding Doors project. We've heard a lot about that. We bid that project, and unfortunately, the low bid was significantly higher than the $120,000 that we'd estimated. The project is being reviewed to determine how to best proceed, but we will be looking to try to move forward with that. Education on page 78 of the 82-page budget message. Two of the top priorities of the program enhancements, expenditure section of the Honorable Town Council's fiscal year 2020 budget policy guidelines, reads as follows. 2A is continue to develop building for future initiatives in collaboration with the School Committee, School Building Committee for the Three Elementary School Project by formalizing a proposal to use funds redirecting the retirement appropriation when the pension fund is fully funded while also paying down the OPEC liability and for the MSBA High School Project with the proposed debt exclusion funding. The other top priority is continue to work collaboratively with the public schools to develop a comprehensive five-year education budget that assures sustainable funding for our schools and the successful education of our children. And then seek to accommodate the manager's forecasted 5% operating budget increase for fiscal year 20, subject to preparation of budget requests by the school committee and subject to validation of revenue and expenditure assumptions back in the fiscal year 20 preliminary budget overview. Dr. Dean Galston, the Superintendent of Schools, presented the fiscal year 2020 Superintendent Recommended Budget to the school committee at their April 1 meeting. The proposed superintendent's budget was $50,441,424, which is an increase of $2.4 million over the current appropriation or 5% of the fiscal year 2019 budget. An excerpt from Dr. Galston's message to the citizens of Watertown reads as follows. "This budget was developed collaboratively with the school and district administrators, curriculum, and program coordinators in the school committee. The process requires that every participant to consider the needs of our students, identify outcomes that could be expected for any new resource, and be creative in using resources that are available." Dr. Galston had gone on to say within her remarks, "Like to acknowledge the support of the Watertown residents, have shown the district, and express their gratitude for providing the district leadership with the necessary funds to offer the best education possible for our students." On April 5, the Honorable School Committee unanimously adopted the fiscal year 2020 Superintendent Recommended Budget. The submitted budget tonight continues this town's very strong commitment to education. As I indicated, the recommended dollar amount is $50,441,424. The strong commitment of the town council's appropriation to the school system is evidenced on page 21 of the budget message, which shows the education appropriation going up almost $18.6 million from fiscal year 2009, while other town appropriations increased by $10.7 million for the same period of time. Like to just kind of touch upon the building for future initiatives, just to kind of clearly indicate that one of the highlights of the budget. Conceptual recommendation from the 2020 capital improvement program from town council reads in part is concur with the decision to proceed with the building for the future initiative of $170 million for the Three Elementary School Project funding within confines of Proposition 2.5. So follow-up to that budget policy guideline that I read earlier, in accordance with the budget policy guideline 2A, as well as the conceptual recommendation, the following is the timeline for borrowing $170 million for the Three Elementary Schools project. In fiscal year 20, it would be $35 million. Fiscal year 21 would be $45 million. Fiscal year 22 would be $45 million. And fiscal year 2023 would be $45 million. All of that borrowing to be done within the confines of Proposition 2.5. The debt service for the next four fiscal years, a little shy of a million dollars in fiscal year 2020. 2021 would be close to $4.5 million. Fiscal year 2022 would be $8.6 million. And in fiscal year 2023, you're looking at an appropriation of $12,663 for the debt service for the Three Elementary Schools project. Again, all within the confines of Proposition 2.5. The expenditure forecast within the fiscal year 2020 budget has departmental expenditures projected to increase at 2.5% annually from fiscal year 2021 through 2023. The education appropriation is projected to increase 5% annually from fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2023. We look forward to continuing working collaboratively with the Watertown Public Schools to develop a comprehensive, multi-year education budget that assures sustainable funding for our schools and the successful education of our children. Mr. President, members of the council, in closing, the goal of this administration in all the town departments is to provide the highest level of services to the citizens of this community while utilizing taxpayers' dollars as efficiently as possible. The submitted budget tonight is balanced and is based on sound business practices. I believe the submitted fiscal year 2020 budget focuses on achieving the long-term goal of sound financial management and fiscal stability. And, Mr. President, members of council, prior to closing my remarks tonight, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank all of the department heads for their assistance. Many are here tonight. We've got, and I'm going to ask them to all stand in a few minutes, but it's interesting through the years, you've got the Superintendent of Public Works, who was one of the first department heads that I appointed back in 1993. And then we have with us tonight a town treasurer collector, who started yesterday. So we've got, so, you know, I think, not county jury, but it's 26 years since that appointment was made. But I would like to thank them all for their assistance. I'd like them all to stand, including our new Director of Administration, Finance for DPW. All of these folks are very much, very much appreciated. We've got this Chairman of the School Committee here with us tonight, Superintendent of Schools, Heidi Perkins is here. So you guys can stand. I mean, I don't know. And then additionally, I'd like to thank, kind of a special thanks in particular to the late treasurer, Nancy Heffron, Assistant Town Manager Steve McGoon, and most importantly, Tom Tracy, the Town Audit Assistant Town Manager, finance for their collective efforts and valuable assistance. And lastly, I'd like to publicly thank, acknowledge and thank my wife, Jane, for her patience, understanding, and support through the development of tonight's budget. Thank you.
Well done. Before we move on, I want to discuss our budget deliberation schedule. It's not quite final. Over the past several years, we've done not only a Saturday session, but we've done five budget meetings. We're pretty much determined to whittle this down to four budget meetings. Right now, the ones that are scheduled for sure are Monday, May 13 at 6:00 p.m., Saturday, May 18 at 9:00 a.m., Tuesday, May 28, following the town council meeting. We will be calling a special meeting of the town council on June 4 at 6:00 p.m. to vote on the budget. And tentatively, we're doing Tuesday, May 21 at 6:00 p.m. That one is tentative at this point, so we'll have more information shortly. But those are the evenings. We're working on who's coming at what night, and we're trying to balance it out. But I appreciate the efforts of the manager, Tom Tracy, Mr. McGoon, and everybody here in working with us so we can understand what you're doing with the town's money. So we're looking forward to those hearings. The next item on the agenda, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, did you have anything else?
No, absolutely not.
Request for information. Any requests for information? Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. My request is for a list of locations of town trash receptacles, including their type and the service schedule for these public containers.
Any other requests for information? Counselor Connellis.
Thank you. There are still several items pending on my list, and I know that the town manager has been very busy, so I'll let it pass until the next time. Thank you.
Any other requests? Announcements? Any announcements? Nobody wants to talk about Dancing with the Stars? Counselor Felton is dancing.
Please buy tickets, please. We have a wonderful cast to dance.
Take this opportunity to ask, tell people to come to the event.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. President. As my fellow colleague Counselor Donato announced a while ago, our very own president is going to be emcee for the evening. I'm one of the dancers, and there's also dancers participating from the Fire Department, the Police Department, Boys and Girls Club, and Community Foundation. So it's going to be really fun, and it's for a great cause, supporting our schools and Rotary. And thanks for everyone who puts off a great evening. I have to say, I think the food is really great, too. It's a good deal for what, you know, what you usually have to pay for benefits. So it's Friday, May 10 at the Hellenic Center in the East End at 25 Bigelow Avenue.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Public forum, any member of the public wish to be heard at this time? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn and watch the Bruins game?
So moved.
They were up 2-0 after one. So moved.
Second.
For a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you all.
[inaudible][1712.63]